The meeting will now, hello? The meeting will now please come to order. Will the clerk please read the call of the meeting and the return of service?
Plymouth SS, greetings to either of the constables of the town of Duxbury and said county. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of Duxbury, qualified to vote in elections and in town affairs, to meet in the Duxbury Schools Performing Arts Center, 73 Alden Street in said Duxbury, on Monday, the 12th day of August 2019, next, at 7:00 PM for a special town meeting for the transaction of any business that may legally come before said meeting. And you are hereby directed to serve this warrant by posting attested copies thereof as prescribed by Mass. General Law, Chapter 39, Section 10, and by Chapter 2, Section 2.3 of the Town of Duxbury General Bylaws, and by publishing a copy of this warrant in a Plymouth County newspaper as prescribed by Article 2, Section 2.3 of the Duxbury Bylaws, at least 14 days before the time of holding said meeting. Hereof fail not and make due return of this warrant with your doings thereon to the town clerk at the time and place of this meeting, given under our hands this 15th day of July 2019. Board of Selectmen, David J. Madigan Chair, Theodore J. Flynn Vice Chair, Sean Dowling Clerk. Plymouth SS, July 17, 2019. Pursuant to the warrant, I have this day notified and warned the inhabitants of the town of Duxbury, here and described, to meet at the time and place and for the purposes as described by the bylaws of the town. A true copy attested. Mitchell LeBret, Constable of Duxbury.
Unless there's some objection, we'll dispense with the reading of the warrant. Let me introduce the people you see facing you in front of the hall. They are on your right, David Madigan Chair, this Board of Selectmen, Sean Dowling, Ted Flynn, and sitting with them is Rainey Reed, our Town Manager. Here on the platform with me is our Town Clerk, Susan Kelly, Assistant Town Clerk, Linda Savadi, and Town Council, Jeffrey Blake. In the front on your left, seated are members of the Finance Committee, Betsy Sullivan Chair, Kathy, I'm sorry, Kathleen Glenn, Nate Taylor, Jerry Pizzani, Shannon Golden, and Ed Venna. My name is John Tuffy and I'm the Town Moderator. The hall today is divided into six sections, although we are only going to be using three. Three of the sections are on the upper level. Section 1 is the small section on the main floor in front of me to my left. Section 2 is the center section in the front, and Section 3 is the small section on my right. Section 4, if we get a sudden influx of people, is the section of the balcony on the upper left. Section 5 is the center of the balcony, and Section 6 is the section on the right. Visitors will be seated in the rear section of Section 1 to my left, which is the non-voter section. Please note that if a hand count is taken, the tellers will not be counting voters who are sitting in the non-voting section. Microphones are available at the end of the aisles for your use, as well as a microphone in the front of the room. Assisted listening devices are available at the table next to the entrance to the main floor, right behind Section 1. They are provided by the Municipal Commission on Disabilities. The fire chief has requested that I point out the fire exits in this room. There are two fire exits on the lower level of the auditorium, one to my immediate right, your left, and one to my left where you entered the room. There are also two fire exits on the upper level of the room at the rear of the hall behind the balconies. Please do not block these exits by standing or placing anything such as chairs in front of them. And in case you wondered, the capacity in this room is 1,030, and I think we're going to be okay tonight. The fire chief has also requested that you not sit on the aisles or on the stairs between the balcony and the main floor. I request that all cell phones be turned off while the meeting is in session, except for public safety officials. And for your information, this meeting is being taped. I'd like to review a few town meeting procedures with you before we proceed. Both of these articles on the warrant require a simple majority vote. If I am unable to determine if there's a majority vote by voice vote, we will use a hand count. If seven or more voters immediately question my determination, we will have a hand count. Upon checking in, registered voters were issued colored cards, those little blue slips of paper. The card enables you to be seated in the voting section. If a hand count becomes necessary, the card must be held up when the vote is counted. The tellers have been instructed to count only votes cast by persons who are holding colored cards. If you lose your card, please go to the teller's desk, which is in the hallway immediately outside the main entrance to the room, and they will issue a new one. To ensure accuracy, all hand votes will be counted by two tellers. This may require some additional time and request your cooperation. And as part of the check-in procedure, the tellers have been authorized by the Board of the Registros to request positive identification in case of doubts. Once the tellers make that count of the votes, they will then bring those numbers up to the front of the room, and the Town Clerk and I will count them up. At this point in our town meeting, we customarily vote to give permission to speak to town employees and officials who are not registered voters in the town of Duxbury. Accordingly, I will entertain a motion to allow our town employees and officials to speak should the occasion arise. Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, the ayes habit, the motion carries. If there are any people here tonight who are not registered voters who wish to speak, we will go through that one at a time and get permission from town meeting to allow you to speak. This meeting is covered by the statute of our bylaw and town meeting times. In addition, I suggest we abide by the following procedures so that we may conduct the business of this meeting in an orderly fashion. After I've announced it, we are considering an article. The article will be moved by the Finance Committee, and their recommendation will be heard. I will give the proposer of the article the opportunity of making their opening remarks. In those cases where there's an organized or recognized opposition to an article which has been identified to me, I will give the opponent of the article the opportunity of making their opening remarks. Upon completion of these remarks, the matter will be open for general debate. If you wish to speak, I request you go to one of the microphones. After you've been recognized by me, identify yourself by name and street address. I request that all speakers limit their remarks to a maximum of five minutes, and that speakers do not attempt to be recognized for a second time on discussion of any article until every other person who wishes to speak has had an opportunity to do so for the first time. If you have any amendments, we ask that you reduce them to writing so that we may have a clear record of what they are. Two other items I want to mention. One is procedures for the motion for the previous question. A motion for the previous question is a motion to end debate. It takes a 2/3 vote to pass. It is a useful motion for town meetings, but there are concerns that it can be used and abused. And so, to that end, there are two procedures that I will follow. One is I will not accept a motion for the previous question from someone who has just finished speaking on an article, eliminating it as a vehicle to get in the last word. And second, I will not entertain a motion for previous question until an article has been opened for general debate. Reconsideration, probably not going to come up because this is such a small warrant, but so that you know what the rules are should it come up. It requires the same quantitative vote as the original motion. It must be made at the same session. May only be made once. And finally, a motion to reconsider may only be considered if the proponent provides, in the opinion of the moderator, factual information that was not available during the session when the vote was taken. That having been said, we'll start with Article Number 1, Mrs. Sullivan. Do we have a, can we have a motion?
Yes, we do. Article 1, acceptance of Section 17(c) of Chapter 90 of the General Laws. I move that the town accept Section 17(c) of Chapter 90 of the Massachusetts General Laws as presented in the warrant. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. If you're confused as to exactly what we're talking about, in the hallway when you came in is a copy of the warrant, and that's certainly available. It's not particularly long. And then there's a yellow sheet out there which has the motion that has just been made by Mrs. Sullivan. Before I recognize Mr. Reed, who's going to speak to this article, I will let you know that this has been recommended by the Selectmen unanimously, 3-0, and the Finance Committee at 5-0. Mr. Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. For the benefit of the folks in the audience and the folks at home watching on TV, I just wanted to let you all know that we left copies in the back explaining what the process will be should the voters decide to adopt this provision. And if you don't mind, for the benefit of the viewers at home, I'm just going to quickly read through it. So if this 17(c) process is adopted for the lower statutory speed limit, first, a request would be made in writing to lower the speed limit from a rate of travel to another, that is 30 miles an hour to, say, 25 miles an hour. Secondly, the written request would then be forwarded to the Highway Safety Advisory Committee by way of the Board of Selectmen's office. Third, the Highway Safety Advisory Committee would review, discuss, and act upon the proposal. They would make a recommendation, which would then be forwarded to the Board of Selectmen. As part of this process, the Highway Safety Advisory Committee will review if the road upon which the proposed speed limit to be reduced is either thickly settled or a business district. And the thickly settled areas are defined as places where the distance between those houses averages less than 200 feet for a distance of a quarter mile or more. The fourth step would be that the Board of Selectmen would review the proposal and the recommendation from the Highway Safety Advisory Committee, and then act upon it. If approved as part of their decision, the Board of Selectmen will designate the subject road as either thickly settled or a business district. And then finally, number five, notice of action would be sent to the Massachusetts Department of Transportation.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Are there any questions about the article itself or the motion? Sensing there are, we have a question, if you'd please. I'm going to ask you to please go to a microphone. The issue being that this is being taped, and somebody at home cannot hear you when you speak to the room. Although you have a wonderful town meeting voice and we could hear you. At the back, there we go.
Okay, hi. My question is...
Could I get you to introduce yourself and your name and address, please?
Sorry, I've never been the first one to talk at town meeting before. Michelle Hatfield, 272 St. George. I am wondering whether, in Part 3 and 4 here, whether a street needs to be designated thickly settled or a business district to qualify for this reduction in speed, or whether other areas like, I don't know, Washington Street by the Bluefish River or Powder Point Avenue that wouldn't necessarily be a business district or thickly settled might also be, you know, whether the Highway Safety Committee has leeway to designate those as places we should drive slowly.
We'll see if we can't get you an answer. Town Council, Mr. Blake will respond.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jeffrey Blake, as you probably know, and thank you for having me out here tonight. To answer your question, you know, unfortunately, the answer is no. In order for us to be able to lower the speed limit, we're getting the authority to do it in the thickly settled or business districts. So if there's another area that doesn't qualify under these definitions, which is approximately dwelling units of, on the average, about 200 feet apart, then no, we can't just switch to reduce the speed limit in a different area if it doesn't meet that qualification. Now, the next one that we are going to do with respect to the safety zones, which is the next article, and I don't, I hope I'm not out of order, Mr. Moderator, for talking about this, but...
Well, it will probably save questions when we get to the next article, and the two articles are somewhat of the same ilk.
That, too, has a statutory requirement, which would be required to be abutted by certain land uses, where there may be a conflict between pedestrian and vehicular traffic. So to answer your question, if they don't fall within either one of those definitions, then these particular statutory sections are not going to help us.
A quick follow-up question. These are state statutes that we're using. How does the town, if needed, adopt its own policies to remedy...
Well, as a matter of information, if you could respond, that would be fine, Mr. Blake.
There is a more lengthy process that's done. There are traffic studies that need to be undertaken, and there's a, we need to work with the DOT. So it's a much more cumbersome process. The DOT and the state, through the Municipal Modernization Act, has recognized that there are certain areas within the town, the thickly settled and the safety zones, that require, that they're giving the towns the flexibility to have a much quicker action on. So there's a process for doing it all around town, but it's more or less discretionary with the DOT, and it's a much more involved process.
Thank you.
Thank you. Recognize the gentleman in the back left, then we'll come down to Mr. Lambert in the front of the room, and then the gentleman in the back right. Please.
So I'm Rick Peters, 35, Milesview Drive. I think this is a good idea, and we should do it. But I think the answer for the question before is not this lengthy procedure. I think it's we need to try to enforce the speed limits we have. In fact, I suspect that the woman who died, died because somebody was exceeding our speed limit. Two weeks ago, at the corner of Standish and Crescent, which is basically a 90-degree road, turn, somebody was exceeding the 20 mile an hour speed limit because he went across the road, or she, went across the road, glanced off a two-foot tree, managed not to roll over on the hill, and get back up onto the road. Now, many times, there are cars coming down that street. That would have been a head-on collision. Today, I was at the Bluefish River, and there were cars going over that Bluefish River Bridge at at least 40 miles an hour. We need enforcement of the 30 mile an hour speed limit or the 25 mile an hour speed limit. It will not do any good if we can't get that done. Thank you.
Thank you. Gentlemen in the back, and then you, Mr. Lambert.
Mark McDevitt, Chestnut Street. I'm frankly not in favor of this, but a couple of questions. First, why is the town not opting in by saying that all roads not already posted will be subject to the 25 miles per hour thickly settled? You look at a list of towns that have adopted this, and, you know, 3/4 of them have adopted it town-wide. So I'm wondering why you've decided to go road by road? And the second follow-up question is, from what I've read, it affects only roads that are not already posted with a regulatory speed limit, so that the signs that are on Washington Street, Powder Point, they stay up, and this does not override those. If you could clarify that, I'd appreciate it.
Mr. Reed.
This is the Town Manager winging it, but not really. We looked at this first as an incident as to where the accident took place, and the greatest impetus for change was on the heavily-traveled Washington Street. There are other streets, King Caesar, Powder Point, where there's heavy pedestrian seasonal traffic as well. And we thought the best approach here was to follow through with what the Municipal Modernization Act allows. And in this case, it allows you to do it a street-by-street basis. I know that towns like Situate have adopted it town-wide. I'm not sure how they did that. They may have adopted this statute ages ago. They may have chosen to do the town-wide adoption of 25 miles an hour 20-something years ago.
No, that's not true.
I don't know how, like I said, I don't know how they did it. I know that they have signs that say that it's 25 town-wide, but this is the approach that we chose because it's the, we know that it's the one that we can execute legally.
Okay. Just so you know, the Department of Transportation website recommends that towns adopt an all-in approach, but they can do it street-by-street. The follow-up question, does the town's passage of this give them the authority to change the existed black-and-white-posted regulatory speed limit signs?
I'd have to ask Council that. The answer is yes.
What was that?
In those areas, yes.
In those areas, but not the entire street. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lambert.
James Lambert, 148 Washington Street. Just a question for a clarification of Town Council. As I read this article, and I assume it parrots the statutory language, it says, "Distance between dwellings averages 200 feet." I assume that is the wall-to-wall between the closest, my closest wall to my neighbors and their closest wall to me, and has nothing to do with how much frudge. Is that correct?
Correct. That's my understanding of the statutory definition.
Good, missed you. Could you come up here and share your thoughts with the microphone?
The short answer is yes. It's dwelling to dwelling.
We have a gentleman in the back, my left.
Steve Fulmer, 111 Depot Street. The question I have up front is, why are we focused so keenly on the reduction of speed limits? And I don't ask that rhetorically. I ask that, what's the empirical data evidence that suggests that that makes for safer streets?
Well, I guess I have to, before I ask somebody to respond, I'm going to suggest that that's part of the overall discussion of some interest, but that's not what the article is about. And so, I think we'd all like some additional education on this, but we need to focus on the fact that increased enforcement will not be, we're not voting on increased enforcement, but rather the acceptance of this article.
No, I understand that, but informing my vote to or for this, you know, helping to inform that decision is the suggestion that this is a useful way to increase safety and reduce speeds on our streets. And if...
And, Mr. Reed, do we have an answer?
Since the crux of the argument on that relies on enforcement, I would yield to the police chief, if you don't mind, Mr. Moderator.
Well, it doesn't, okay, it does partially revolve around enforcement, yeah.
Well, do we have a police chief?
Sorry.
Mr. Police Chief, are you prepared to answer?
I'd just like some clarification on that question. I'm not really sure what we're asking here on the enforcement piece, so I'd just have a little clarification.
Could I get you to restate your question?
It was more about if we're talking here about reducing speed limits, do we know that that's an effective way statistically and, you know, empirically proven to reduce speeds on our roads? Whether it's through enforcement or just seeing the reduced speed limits and actually
I can't speak to any specific data that would support that. However, it's only common sense that, I think that if we lower speed limits, then people are going to, the majority of people are going to abide by those speed limits. And I think, you know, we posted our radar trailers down on Washington Street for one week, the week, the last week of July into August, and the data supports with over 23,000 cars that were tracked by our radar trailers, and that's, you know, it's a lot of back-and-forth trips, obviously. But 85% of the people are abiding by the speed limits down there. You're always going to have those folks that aren't going to abide by speed limits. And unfortunately, you know, from the enforcement piece, we can't be everywhere at all times. We have quite a few streets that we have to patrol, and generally, we have, you know, have a few officers on the road to do those enforcement duties. From the police department perspective, we've reached out, and we've recently received grants, pedestrian safety grants, and we put those patrols out there, extra patrols from the Executive Office of Public Safety in Boston. So we're doing what we can, but at the same time, we can't be everywhere at all times. But from a data perspective, our, just our data that we collected in a short period of time, it's pretty, it's clearly indicative of the majority of people are abiding by those speed limits. It's, you're always going to find those folks that aren't, and those are the folks that, you know, we do our best to find and to educate or find if needed. But once again, we can't be everywhere at all times.
Thank you.
Point of clarity, I think maybe I read the Clipper article incorrectly, but it seemed to indicate to me when I read it that roughly half of the vehicles traveling in both directions were exceeding the speed limit. So that, to me, suggests that people aren't abiding by the speed limit, they're exceeding it mostly. The only study that I found that supports reduction, or that conclusion seemed to indicate reduction of speed limits was reducing speeds, which is ultimately what we want, was an Insurance Institute of Highway Safety study that was done in Boston. But if you actually look at the data inside that, it actually did not reduce the speed traveled on those roads, not even 1 mile per hour, nor did it reduce the 85th percentile speed of all the vehicles traveling therein. So that study doesn't support the fact that it'll slow people down. As to the enforcement question, just out of curiosity, I had a look at the report logs from the police department as far as motor vehicle stops. And this is a rough analysis. I don't know what all of the stops were, whether they were speeding, or taillights, or registration, or what have you. But in the four months from April through July 20th, the police department logged 1,039 total motor vehicle stops. Of those stops, 72.6% were issued a verbal warning, 22.9% were issued a written warning, and 2.9% were issued a citation. Now granted, that's not necessarily all speeding. There's all sorts of things going on there. But to me, if there's a 3% citation rate for anybody who is speeding, whether that's the 22,000 vehicles that are coming through Snug Harbor or not, that's not really a very high incentive to not speed or pay attention to speed limits. So to me, if we have data that suggests that lowering speed limits will make our roads safer, then I will vote in favor. But to this point, there's nothing that tells me that it will.
Thank you. Woman in the back right-hand corner?
Yes, Lisa Bedderidge, and I am a business owner in Hall's Corner. I also reside at 68 Eagles Nest Road. I grew up in Duxbury. I'm the high school class of 1972. I moved here in 1965. When I was in high school, the speed limit on both Powder Point, King Caesar, and Washington Street was 25 miles an hour. I think that in order to keep all of us alive, we should drive 25. I personally feel that I had, my husband is in the diagnostic radiology group in Plymouth, and we see a lot of broken people over the course of the years because of people perhaps driving too fast, doing reckless things. But I honestly think that if we peel it back to the 60s, when it was 25, I don't recall anyone dying when they were jogging. And I think one death is way too many. And I think that we would be grossly negligent if we didn't really consider this as an opportunity to change for the good. Perhaps many people won't abide by the speed limit, but it will give the law enforcement officers much more clout to enforce that. We are all probably parents or children of parents, and no one wants their child to die needlessly. So I would really implore you all to accept this. I just think it's the right thing to do.
Thank you. Gentlemen in the back, my left.
Brian Donnelly, Bristol Drive. It's a point of clarification, Mr. Moderator. When we say we are authorizing, are we saying that we are mandating, or are we authorizing in the sense that we're providing the opportunity for the deliberation on whether or not the speed limits would be changed?
Well, I don't mean to speak for the Board of Selectmen, so, Mr. Dowling?
Sure. We're providing an opportunity. In fact, the way we discussed it, and to speak to the gentleman in the blue shirt as well, this is one of many tools that we want in our tool belt to try to take care of this issue. We know that posting of speed limits at a 5 mile an hour lower rate isn't necessarily going to hit everybody, but between that, cross rocks, signage, the little signs you see now put up in the middle of the road, which, you know, you see all the time, if you go to other towns like Marion, I go to a lot, they have 12 of them down Main Street, every 150 feet with this crosswalk. So we're just looking for something to assist us in making it safer for the town. It's not, nothing's going to be absolutely foolproof. Nothing's going to prevent somebody from exceeding the speed limit, disregarding signs or anything else like that. And to directly answer your question is, this just gives authorization for us to discuss it and then vote on it.
So to be clear, this is not a mandate to implement new speed limits. It will give you the tool to do so with further deliberation and so forth.
That is absolutely correct.
Okay, thank you.
You've been waiting patiently, Mr. Dowling. Did anything else you wanted to say?
Sure. I... Sure, I would like to encourage everybody here to look at this as something that, again, is just giving us an opportunity to wake people up, make people think about what, what's going on in town, and to slow the cars down. I mean, I, I spend my entire day riding up and down Washington Street probably six times a day, I see p, all sorts of things happening that shouldn't be happening, and I wish there was a police officer, I could just, you know, wave a wand and he would appear at the right time, but that doesn't happen all the time. And we, we are, one of the tools we're, we're using is asking town manager to talk to the police chief about stricter enforcement and about written violations versus, you know, sorry, you, you do better next time type of warnings. So we are looking to use many tools to get to the, get people to go slower down, up and down Duxbury Streets.
Gentleman in the blue, blue shirt, to my right.
Mr. Moderator, Abe Neal, 43 Lantern Lane. It would really inform my vote, I guess this is directed through you to the Board of Selectmen and the Town Manager, to know some of these comprehensive measures that you do intend to take, because I think that's what some people are getting at here, is that, that this seems, this can't be, we can't have this tragedy be lost on us and, and just move on. You know, I, are we looking at Old Colony Planning Council to study this? Could they do something? Enforcement, traffic calming measures, are these radar trailers actually effective or not? Do we need to increase the budget for the police? Do we need to add a officer to traffic duty at AM and PM, high-traffic hours? And I did pull up a, I think it was 2017 article in the Boston Globe that laid out traffic tickets by capita per municipality in the, in the, in the Commonwealth. We're in the low twenties for Plimpton, which, as a kid, I just knew you don't drive fast through Plimpton, they're writing 68 tickets per hundred residents per capita.
Mr. Brogna, did you have a, have a response? Mr. Paul Brogna is Chair of the Highway Safety Committee.
Paul Brogna, 21 Villageway, co-chair of the Highway Safety Committee. Our committee is nine volunteers. We have no budget. We don't have a secretary. We have three licensed engineers, two police officers, deputy fire chief, and three or four citizens at large. We welcome the opportunity to help make our roads as safe as possible. By voting yes tonight, you're basically allowing the town, very deliberately and selectively, to look at any requests coming before our committee through the Town Manager to the Board of Selectmen. You will not see a 25 mile an hour sign between now and seven o'clock tomorrow morning, I can guarantee you that. You may see some traffic counters on the roads tomorrow morning. At our last meeting two weeks ago, we voted with the recommendation of Valerie Masada, Town Planner, to request the Old Colony Planning Council out of Brockton to do traffic counts, additional traffic counts in Duxbury. Over the last three or four years, they completed traffic surveys on Route 3, on the Route 3A corridor for exit 10 at the Island Creek, Route 3 interchange, through the Bay Bailey's corner at the Milepost, up to Cox's Corner at the Millbrook Motors, up to the Marshfield Town Line. They also completed one on Route 53 from the Kingston line to the Pembroke line. From what we were told this morning, the traffic counters will probably be placed in three or four locations tomorrow. Washington Street, St. George Street, and the Millbrook area, Railroad Avenue and St. George Street as well. That is a plus, that is fast, fast service for the attention that we are putting into this program. As Mr. Reed said a few minutes ago, any request has to come before our committee, and we will aggressively and technically respond to it in accordance with the requirements that Chapter 17(c) of the General laws of Chapter 90 require. We have three licensed engineers on our committee, as I said, and we will look at each and every request as much in detail as we can. For those of you that have been in town for many years, every road in town, with the exception of a few state roads, has always had a 30 mile an hour speed limit. That doesn't mean that we will selectively and arbitrarily lower them because people want to load. We have to follow the standards, the thresholds, good engineering practices and principles. And as Chief McDonald said, the traffic counts that were done on Washington Street, believe it or not, the 85th percentile, which is what the design speed is, was 34 miles an hour in one direction and 33 miles an hour in another direction. What that basically means is Washington Street was designed and is working at 30 miles an hour very objectively. Now whether that warrants custom study for it, that's what we're gonna look at, the traffic studies down by, done by the Old Colony Planning Council over the next few weeks, that will provide us with a lot more information to technically and objectively review each and every request. I just hope people look at where they live or where they drive around town, and obviously drive for the occasion, drive for the conditions, and we will respond to each and every request as diligently and as technically professionally as we can. We hope we do the what is best for our interest here in the town, and really for the commuters that drive through the town every day. And obviously, the police department will be out there enforcing everything, so. If any questions, I'd be really happy to address them, but feel free, we meet the first Thursday of every month, 3:30 in the afternoon, the Senior Center. We welcome anybody to come in. The Selectmen's Office has all my contacts, if you want to be put on the agenda for a certain road or a certain neighborhood in town, and we're more than willing to discuss the situation. Thank you.
Thank you. A woman in, who's been patiently waiting in, on my left, and then Mr. Madigan, our Selectman.
Rose Anna Beal, 25 Prince Street. I don't think it's a good precedent to establish the policy on the basis of an exception. I would like to hear some facts, too. I would like to know how many traffic mortalities or serious injuries have occurred on Duxbury roads due to a vehicular incident that was not triggered by alcohol or drug impairment? In other words, a person driving too fast who was not under the influence of any chemical substance? Because I think that those incidences over the last 50 years are probably very few. People who are in control of their driving habits will either follow the law or not follow the law according to their philosophy. But someone who is impaired is gonna be similarly impaired whether the, the speed limit is five miles an hour or 50 miles an hour. And a terrible thing happened on Washington Street, but if the speed limit had been five miles an hour, it would have still happened. Because people who are drunk or on drugs aren't paying attention to speed limits when their car is out of control. I think we need to think about why we're doing this. Maybe it's an opportunity to think about speed overall in this town, but let's not think that lowering speed limits is gonna avoid accidents when the cause of the accident at the base is not really speed.
I, I thank you for your comments, but I'd like to remind you, as well as the, the meeting as a whole, you are not voting tonight to lower any speed limits. You're voting to give the Selectmen, through the adoption of a, of a state law, the ability to make a change in the speed limits. If and when that happens, it'll happen at a Selectmen's meeting, as I understand it, Mr. Reed, correct me if I'm wrong, and that is the time when you might wanna share those, those thoughts, because at that point in time, that's when the speed limit will change, if it changes at all. Mr. Madigan?
Okay, I, I mean, this has been repeated now, again, several times. This is simply a tool for us going forward. When we initially had the discussions on whether we should decrease the speed limit on Washington Street, what we found is legally, we could do nothing. So if we find another area in town where there are businesses and we need to slow down traffic, if we don't accept this, we won't be able to do anything then either, and we'll be back attempting to accept this law again. The whole point here is simply to accept Chapter 90, 17(c) that allows us to assign a 25 mile an hour speed limit under certain conditions and after certain studies, and to be able to do it. And we want to be able to have that tool in the box going forward if we need it, and be able to pull that out. Now, are we gonna change any speed limits immediately? No, probably not. We have a lot of studies we have to do, and we have to prove out to the DOT that what we're doing is appropriate and correct, and that it will increase safety. Logically, if we decrease the speed limit from 25 to 30, speaking as you're typical American, and my kids both say, if you go to Europe and you see a 25 mile an hour speed limit, you better go 25, because that's as fast as the road will let you go. For some reason, in the US, we think if we have a 30 mile an hour speed limit, we could go 40. If we have a 25 mile an hour speed limit, we start thinking maybe we should go 30. At least it'll slow people down, or at least make them think as they're going up the road in these areas where it is very highly congested. And if you look at Washington Street on a Saturday afternoon, when all of the boat trailers are parked on the side of the road, it's barely one lane wide. It's very difficult to get through. We have to do something to start slowing it down, and we have to do something to increase the enforcement. We've talked about it, we've talked about, you know, putting out that radar machine. Personally, I think those are skewed results, because as soon as you see the radar machine, you slow down, and so the radar machine catches you slowing down. So, you know, that's all part of the enforcement, it's one of the things that we had discussed at our meeting, is there are permanent signs we can put up that'll tell you how fast you're going and what the speed limit is, and that may be the solution we go to with a 25 mile an hour speed limit, is post them with the speed signs up. But the idea is just to have people aware that there is a limit to how fast you can go down that road, and there are blind spots on that road, particularly when you go over the hills, and if you're going faster than 30, you won't be able to see anything over the top of that hill until you get over it. And that's where we start to run into problems. Now, are there fatalities in town? Thank God, no. We've had this one, and we had one other 35 years ago in town over on Powder Point. And that's been the two that we've had that have been pedestrian accidents. Now, within town and our responses, I mean, we do have the Duxbury Triangle out on Route 3, which seems to have become a very popular crash spot, but people coming off of Route 3 in a lot of areas are coming off too fast, and that, you know, is other things that we have to take a look at for enforcement. But it is really just a tool that we're trying to adopt in this meeting so that we can go forward and respond appropriately with the tools that we need to be able to respond.
Thank you, Mr. Madigan. A gentleman in the back, and then maybe we're about ready for a vote?
Scott Casagrande, 500 Washington Street. I would echo the sentiments that we've heard here this evening regarding the enforcement on the speed limit. I think I took to heart after this, specifically every time I'm going down the road, making sure I'm going 30. We've all done it, you know, your, your speed creeps up to 35 on you sometimes, but if you're, you're going 30 miles an hour down Washington Street, you literally don't have to touch your brakes anywhere you go around, and you can see everything in front of you without any issue. In doing so, though, we need to keep in mind that not just pedestrians are on these roads or the, the more scenic roads, but we also have a lot of bike riders, whether they be semi-professional or just out with the family on these roads. And I've found over the course of the weekends with, with all the, you know, the parking with boat trailers and everything else, that, that takes care of the speed limit right there when you're heading through Snug Harbor and all the trailers being parked. You, everyone's crawling through at 10 miles an hour trying to get around where they need to be there, so that, that kinda self-polices. But one concern I have with, with a lowered speed limit to 25 or so, we're, we're only talking about a, a low percentage of the time that we have the pedestrians and the bicycles really all over that area. And that said, the most important thing, and this isn't coming up now, and this is something we're working on at the Planning Department and through the Planning Board and through our comprehensive plan that we're just finished up, is the sidewalks. The sidewalks are the safety issue for all pedestrians. That's the answer for pedestrians not being on the street. With regard to the lower speed limit and the bicycles, though, we, we have a number of riders that come into town and/or are from here in town, and if you're in a car and the speed limit's 25 miles an hour and the bicycle's doing 20, you're having a tough time getting around them safely. And I'm pretty sure our bike riders in town don't wanna ride next to vehicles. So that was a concern I had as well, but I think the real answer, we need to get really to work on finishing up our sidewalks in town so that pedestrians can be safe. That's my question.
And, and again, I remind people, we are not voting to change any speed limit on any road tonight. We're talking about, as Mr. Madigan put it, increasing the number of tools Selectmen have in their toolbox to address speed on roads. Our Town Planner has some comments she feels is responsive to some, to some questions. I'm gonna ask her to speak.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I apologize for the sunglasses, I need them for health reasons. I just wanna respond to the comments in the audience, and the comments of Mr. Casagrande. The, the comprehensive plan is just being released, there's a whole section about transportation, and we're looking at pedestrian, vehicular, and bicycle traffic. And that means that we not only have engaged Old Colony Planning Council to do the traffic counts for summer, over the next two weeks, in all the areas where we've already heard that there are concerns about speeding, so there'll be several traffic counters out. But we're also working with them, they are a regional planning agency that we are members of, they are transportation experts, and they also hold the funding for transportation improvements for the town. And what we are gonna do is work with them on studying where we wanna have walking paths and crosswalks, help us prioritize where these need to go, what other types of traffic calming measures are available to us, whether they need to be temporary or on a more permanent basis. We're also asking them to do a study of the parking issues that we have around Snug Harbor. So we're looking at this holistically. This town meeting article, this town meeting is only about enabling us to have another tool in the toolkit, but the Selectmen and the Planning Office and the Transportation and Town Manager, we're all looking at this from a broad cohesive perspective.
Thank you. We still have some people who wanna speak, and we've been at this for a while, are we ready for a vote, or we'd like to have some more discussion? That seems somewhat mixed, so I guess we'll hear, hear from a few more people. Gentleman in the back right-hand corner?
Yes, Peter Dalton on Wadsworth Road. On our road, our speed limit sign says 30 miles an hour, and underneath that same sign it says children. We have a Wadsworth Little League field, as you all know. I go around town and I'm seeing other signs that say, "Speed limit, five miles an hour for piping clovers." There are 16 little children that live in our neighborhood. You go over the Powder Point Bridge, it says 10 miles an hour, and that's a DOT 5 bridge as well. Speed limit on the road is 15, on the Beach Road. I go to Situate, it says, "Thickly settled, speed limit 25 miles an hour townwide, unless otherwise posted." On Wadsworth Road alone, the last few years, we had a high-speed chase, police chase, that ended up in a total disaster at the end of the road before you turn on Bay Road. We also had another car, there was a DUI incident that smashed my daughter's car, pushed it up in the front lawn. We had only, three weeks ago, this woman right here sitting here, Mrs. O'Brien, she had three children in the front lawn, and a, a young lady came by texting and took her whole fence down, and almost had three children. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. A gentleman on my left?
Tom Murray, Wadsworth Road. As you, several people have mentioned, tonight is just the first step to get this back to the local level.
Correct.
And I went 20 years ago, when Joe Shea was around, to talk about lowering the speed limit, and Joe said, "Our hands are tied, Tom, we, we can't do anything, the state's got us." In 20 years, the sophistication of the cars have changed, they're faster, they're quieter, people don't know that they're exceeding the speed limit. These kids are texting all the time, let's face it, anybody who commutes in the morning can see it easily. The police officers do a wonderful job, but they can't be everywhere all the time. So if we keep in mind that tonight's meeting is just the first step to bring this to our local level, let's face it, Beacon Hill isn't doing a great job in transportation right now, period, across the state. So let's, let's take it back to the local level and bring it back to our area, and let us decide, and take it off of Beacon. decide, and take it off of Beacon Hill.
Thank you. All right. Are we ready for a vote?
Yes.
Yes? So I'm going to ask for a vote on Article 1. I think we know what the motion is. It's to accept Section 17(c) of Chapter 90 of the General Laws. We're going to try this as a voice vote. It's a majority vote only. All those in favor of accepting this state statute, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The ayes have it by majority. Mrs. Sullivan may have a motion under Article Number 2.
Article 2, acceptance of Section 18(b) of the Chapter 90 of the General Laws. I move that the town accept Section 18(b) of Chapter 90 of the Massachusetts General Laws as presented in the warrant.
Second.
Selectmen voted 3-0 to recommend. Finance Committee voted 5-0 to recommend.
Mr. Reed, will you be speaking to this?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Again, I would draw your attention to the handout, and I wanted to note the one change that's different from what you just did with the previous article. It's on the reverse side, under Article 2. The fourth item is the most notable difference. All the other processes are roughly the same, with the exception of this. Item 4, as part of their review, "The Highway Safety Advisory Committee will ensure that these areas contain features that qualify for a safety zone. There is no state requirement to do an engineering study for a safety zone, but the state highly recommends that the town documents," excuse me, "that the town documents the rationale for such zones. The state would appreciate receiving a copy of such documentation, but this is not required, and nor will they approve or disapprove anything submitted. Federal regulations require engineering studies for regulatory speed limits. The Department of Transportation has cited an example of a liability concern. That is, if a speed is set too far below the design, the design speed of the roadway, and a vehicle driving near this design speed rearends a slower vehicle traveling at a lower posted speed, the town could be held liable for the artificially low speed. At a minimum, the town should document the conflicts in the area of the safety zone that it is," excuse me, "that is the justification for the zone, such as senior housing, a daycare center, business district, playgrounds, et cetera. The risk is the town's, thus the town is not required to do this, but the state is recommending that it be done." And again, the other parts of the process remain the same as with the previous article.
And I believe that, as in the case of the article we just voted on, this will not make any immediate change, but rather give the Selectmen the opportunity to access a different section of the state law so that they can make changes in the future at a Selectmen's meeting. Is that accurate, Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Thank you. I think we had quite a lengthy discussion on the first article, and I think we understand the issues before us. Are there any specific questions on this article? Seeing none, are we ready? I'm sorry, we do have a question in the back. A woman in-- I'm not sure what color that is.
It's bright, though.
Well, it's a very nice color.
Lisa Patons in Rogers Way. I just have a question at the end when it says, "Or take any other action relative thereto." What exactly is that? Like make in one ways, or?
It is a legal term, so we'll ask our town council to give us an explanation.
I understand. I figured you'd get up.
Good evening again. My name is Jeffrey Blanken. Through you, Mr. Moderator, that actually has nothing to do with the setting of a speed limit, and it's typically what we put at the end of every warrant article. If you'll look at your town meeting warrants from the past, it says, "And take any other action relative thereto." It allows us, in some instances, this isn't probably one of them, to take further actions with respect to that particular warrant article and whether or not the notice requirement has been met.
Do we have any other questions, or are we ready for a vote? All right, I see nobody, I see no questions, so I will ask for a vote on Article Number 2. I think the, I think it's been adequately explained. So, all those in favor of the motion under Article 2, please say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed?
No.
I judge that to be a majority vote. That completes the business of this special town meeting, and I'll now entertain a motion to adjourn the special town meeting. Sunny, aye?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Thank you very much for your cooperation.